Hi, my name is Dana here at State Bank and Trust. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you since 1907.
Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
Hi, this is Lee and Emily Hines. And here at Alexander's Heaton there, we'd like to thank you for your business. And if there's anything you need, just give us a call. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Crystal and I'm the General Manager of Holiday Inn Grill 22, just off of Exit 26 in Guen, Alabama. We want to invite you out to our wonderful Sunday Lunch Buffet from 11 to 2, as well as our karaoke every third Saturday of the month. Our hotel offers multiple banquet rooms for all your meeting and event needs. Take a swim in our family-sized pool and our staff invites you to stay in one of our guest-friendly rooms. Call us here at Holiday Inn in Guen at 205-468-4625. You'll be glad you did and remember, we cater.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guen. With furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guen and Fayette.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today. And just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel weed trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer. From lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
At home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at 205-487-4327.
That's great. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day of life and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us. We ask that you would be with us in this meeting and that all the decisions we do be pleasing and acceptable on your side and for the best will of the citizens of Winfield. For it's in Christ's name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome another buddy to the August 2025 Winfield City Council Meet. It's kind of the weather a little bit today from the back here, so he's not going to be here tonight. First item on the agenda is approved minutes for July 15, 2025, Council Meet. And I need to ask a motion to approve those minutes. If nobody has a problem, how they going to do it for? Keith made a motion. Larry Sager on a favor. Next item on the agenda, Chief Burson, two part-time police officers. We've got somebody to represent, Chief.
Yeah, if you want to call it that.
Representing, Chief, go.
Yes, we are requesting to hire two part-time officers. A Charles Tudwell, which has about 20 years of law enforcement experience, and Jesse Finch with a seven years of law enforcement. And requesting ability to hire him for part-time use.
We have used part-time, we've got a part-time now.
Correct.
You need these two other guys to help fill in the void for short.
Yes, sir.
Representing Gary to represent him with this recommendation. I need to ask the council to approve the officer for part-time.
We didn't begin to.
We've got to think.
Yep.
Do you need a second all in favor? All right, so you know, next item on the agenda, evidence logging software. Justin, I think we've already, we're already set up with this software. You're just going to bring them up to speed with it.
Yes, sir. All right, we use a wall barcode tracking system to maintain our evidence to show us where it's at, where it's located, if it's at the lab, whatnot. It comes up for renewal in seven days, actually. They sent me a bill and we have to pay this every year. It's $1,398 plus tax. So it equals out to $1,538 that we pay them every year. It's cloud-based and they charge us for that storage. They have a system now that is called in-house. They'll work off the server we already have at the PD. The cost of upgrade of this is $4,053, but it's a one-time payment, so we won't have to renew the $1,500 yearly. So over time, obviously, it's going to save us money. So we're looking to move to in-house server so we can have more control over that and the expense.
I talked a bit on that. I said we already set up with this payment, $1,538 a month. This here's a one-time payment. It's coming up in seven days. So I would say, I'll take that $1,538, that's what you're going to pay for the store. You're going to have to pay that in seven days to pay the $4,000. My recommendation to council, we'll go with that new system, the in-house system, put a one-time payment of $4,000, about $53. And that's enough to prove that. June, Keith said all in favor.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is lawn mower, surplus lawn mower bids. You got any bids you got? First bid's coming from Dwayne Norris. Place a bid for $200 for a 220 grasshopper mower. $200 booked from Dwayne Norris. Second bid's coming from Scott Williams. We were just saying, we had.
We're in a terrible time.
It's not ruining anything.
I vote that.
Yeah, that was the printout that we had for it. Second bid, $67.06. $67.06 and then the first one was $200 from Dwayne Norris. My recommendation to council, if you want to accept those bids, take the ones $200. We haven't made no, should keep it up. Larry say all in favor? I'm sure they know that. Next item on the agenda is seal lawn bids for water and sewer expansions at the interstate. We initially started this bid around about 1.5 and we increased it 500. To, we increased it 500 to 2 million because of the urgency of how quick we've got to move up there to do more. Of course, bills, and I probably doing those straight, I have to put water and sewer up through there and curb and gutter and asphalt itself. I felt like we needed to go ahead and try to add another 500,000 dollars to this loan to account for what we're just going to have to spend out. On the expenses for road, sewer, curb, gutter, water. But we all know what it's going to cost over all the time and what we spent for pilot. First bid, come first statement. This is what the bid sheet looked like for everybody. We just, we've got three bids. Okay, mountain lawn, 2.2 million, 12 months fixed rate. For a total of APR of 5.89%. The interest rate's 4.89 and one percent bank fees. So it's a total of 5.89 April. That's first statement. Second bid, Assistant Bank of Winfield. On the same sheet. The total of the interest rate, no bank fees, is 5.6%. Data interest based on the number of days each month ranges from 95, 82, 22 to 10, 608, 89. But there's no fees and total amount for 2.2 million lawn, 5.6%. Pass this around, that's all. The next bid's from State Bank Trust. On the same calculator sheet. Interest rate is 4.65% and no bank fees for 2.2 million. 4.65% with no bank fees. It's a fixed rate of 12 months, 12 months. Does everybody understand? All right, you got, first State Bank, 5.89. That's included their bank fees. State Bank Trust, 4.65 and no bank fees. 5.6 over all, Assistant Bank of Winfield. Need to ask the council. It's going. My recommendation is go with the lowest interest rate, 4.65. Need to ask for a motion. Keep that motion in the second. Larry say all in favor? Appreciate you all giving us a bill and that. We hope for bigger, bigger and better things happening here. We were trying to get exit 30. Maybe we'll get some tax revenue to help pay that back. Next item on the agenda is old business. What you got, Larry?
Yeah, I got a couple, two or three here. I've had a couple of people ask me here lately, where we at with abandoned buildings or houses. Concerned about still housing and buildings being abandoned in the city and being eyesore.
This is after we just pulled down the 18.
Yeah, this has been recently in the last couple of weeks.
Probably another year, one year and a half before we get another grant to do it. Probably, if you're talking about the Florida zoning, weed litter board. I mean, I think we're still sending out, Joan Sandy's not here, but she's still sending out letters for when his complaint's on to give them, you know, trying to go through the process. Of course, it's a time-consuming process to try to get all the bases covered because we've run into that. You know, we, it took us probably nearly a year, eight months, probably a year, year, two months there on the highway. On foothill. We had that one in the Curve, that foothill, that tree on it. That's been, that was a long time in that process. And then, of course, we got an issue with one down in the quarter of states that took six to eight months to. But the one, the one, if anybody has a problem, they do need to file, come in and fill out a community action form that we have to state the fact that they feel, if it's not been, if it's not been nature of the tension, someone complaining about it, to start the process, you know, probably they need to do that. More signatures they've got, the more complaints they have, the better, probably, of course, trying to, we get turned into that. Weed litter board to try to get the problems solved. We've already took care of 18, then take this back to the last six months. Had somebody ask me about the housing authority roads. Those, the housing authority roads, you know, we had that in the last project to pave and they were going to take down 47 trees, all the trees that's inside there. So I pulled that out of that paving project because of them taking the trees down. Well, since then, they've decided not to take the trees down at this time. I don't have the plan on doing it. But what I've done now is I've applied for a grant. We're in the process of getting a grant to pave those roads and the housing authority. I think it's a 10 or 15% nature. I think, is that, I think it's that, yeah.
You know where we're at with the pickleball courts? Is it this month that the contractor is supposed to be here to?
I reached out to them and I spoke with the lady in the office. She called me back and she hasn't given me a definite date. That's the point of reality.
I was thinking they said August.
To begin with, they had said August. So I tried to put them down on a date, but I haven't been able to speak with Mr. Nichols.
I know all the wood that got burned doesn't matter. But what do we do, what we need to do in meantime with weed eaters? Well, she's, I'm sure, making an inventory list of whatever things she's lost. Angie's working with insurance, Angie's emailed. I seen her, she copied me on the email that she sent to the insurance company, asking all those questions because we even lost food and concession stands and the refrigerator, whatever, because it lost power to them because of what, the power got cut. Let me say this, we'll make the decision to do something before we wait, as long as we get on the traffic laws out here. I hope so. But yeah, they've contacted the insurance company and we're waiting here for them. I mean, we won't let it. I mean, right at the time of season, we can't be without, you know, this is a really busy time for us using that equipment. So we won't let it get, we won't let it get covered. We'll make sure that they've got something for us. That's all I guess.
You know, Bill has worked on that road anymore about going into the lane?
I don't know because I've heard of Dan Bill. Y'all hear it too? He, I stopped him.
But it is our way down to the creek.
I stopped him because he's got it to the creek. Yeah, for that, pretty much, yeah. Stopped him there, but we got to decide what we're going to do going across that creek. And the amount of money that I want to hold back on, the amount of money that we're spending until we, until the budget's passed, see where we stand for the revenue that's coming in, for what's going on up there, for what we're spending. So I didn't really want to spend the whole money myself right now to see where we stand for it. Because Gray's got, he's working on things, Bill's working on things. We're working on water and sewer and street. I mean, I pulled the plug on that for a bit. I've been, when we was in there, he was, you know, he was getting on those, he'd get to the turn to go down the hill. So they, I hadn't been back up there, but I understand they're north of the creek. We, we still, we still a chance on this grant down here. What's the deadline?
We have actually emailed and asked if we could transfer to that new property and we're going to dislodge from that. And we might not have to fill out a new grant if we can just transfer the properties.
You know, they're still needing 30-plus acres more. Probably 30, 30, 30,000 is a good number. Land favorites for that grant that they're working on. There's trails and BMX trails, walking and hiking.
And there'd be scoffcoers, a century pass for special needs individuals.
We've done, spent money on this archaeological study up here and they keep finding, they found more and they're finding how to pull out of that spot and that purchase of that. But it's just going to cost too much to get to any of that property to do that. I feel like because of that, that road's a quarter mile in there, at least. Quarter mile to it. I'm not sure how good the access to something like it would have to be. But the key thing's crossing that creek, the bridge. A few months covered. It washed out a few months covered, it's in there, eight, good, 10?
Yeah, it was a 210.
I think it was 210. And washes that kind of.
That's what we seen.
And it washes that kind of way, it's about time for a bridge. And that would be a bridge.
That's all we did.
Um, where do we stand on as far as being ready to have court over that, Mr. Frank?
You got anything? I'll tell you, I'll tell you where we're at.
I was just.
I mean, I don't know. We're at 165, 175,000, we took about where we're at. That's about what it's going to take.
No, the court ring is finished from what I'm told.
This is for the other part of the stuff.
Well, no, I'm inquiring about the court ring. It had a court over there.
I really believe, if I'm not mistaken, the last, what I heard is the glass for the tops of those tables came in and was put in and it was cut wrong. It was cut backwards. They had to get the glass re-cut. And that's the only thing I believe that we're waiting on is that the re-cutting, because whoever supplied the glass, cut them backwards because they turned and they turned them the wrong way or something and they had to get the glass. But other than that, we're complete and ready to hold court over there. Move the court system over there. That's, that's the last I heard, was a week or so ago. We were waiting on that to happen.
Yes, sir.
And if that's not true, that second-hand information, that was not given today. So I overheard that. I believe that's where we are.
That we got? I need to involve, we actually, you know, we put out a bid for that, this is on most businesses, we put out bids for this 2.2 million on the loan. I'm there to ask you to go ahead and go forward with it and all. I need to ask the council to, now that we've got to process the bid, I need to ask the council to approve that one, approve the, through the process if there's a good use of this loan.
It's an actual borrowing resolution. We need to do a borrowing resolution if I could. We, we need to do a borrowing resolution, the bank won't answer, it's actually a resolution, and we'll do authorizing that borrowing.
Make a motion to keep, so ten seconds, all in favor.
And it is two point two, that's the amount borrowed. And that would be for, not just for the water and sewer infrastructure, it'll also be for that road. So it's just all, it's all infrastructure up there, but it's some water and sewer and some, I just need that for the reason for the borrowing.
Because they're on warp speed, and maybe that Sheldon Drive, I think's what the next one's gonna be, when you, when you go in and turn left to file it, and now Sheldon Drive on Michael's Band Drive. You go on Michael's Band, turn left, go file, then you're gonna turn right, go on Sheldon. Bill's waiting out, he's settling one acre lots, facing one twenty-nine, but through there, and he's already got, uh, I know of one, the first lot sold for a business to go there already.
Talking about on Bill's side.
Bill's side. And they have been working pretty hard, getting, trying to get it to grade. Really trying to do that. Both the gas district today, about moving, moving that gas line, they're still waiting on Bill to get through with the dirt work up there before they start that, as soon as they get, as soon as he gets it to grade, they'll move that high pressure gas line away from one twenty-nine.
They got that road all the way through yet? No, the one that goes beside the pilot, between the pilots and Bills, and that road post go all the way through?
Yes, Mike.
Okay.
They, they, the, the city went through a portal, stops right there behind them, so they're in time for them.
Yeah.
Those parts, well, city's pretty... I need the council to be thinking about something. When we, when we go to hire a new police officer that we send to the academy, Brett, Brett's constantly having to revisit hires because of people leaving, uh, going different places or whatever. I need the council to consider, pretty much on a lot of things, what we do, we go by what state guidelines, kind of how the state is, where we, of course, when we hire an employee, could be a police officer sent to the academy or whatever, I think the term is three years, serve three years is a tough, two?
Two. It, well, it's based on cost, and, and there's a state statute that allows departments, that one department takes another to, to give reimbursement of that, and so they have to communicate with each other, but it does not, it, it's, would be our department requesting it from, if they go somewhere else, to another department, but you can sign agreements with individuals with your own department, so if that individual leaves, you're not seeking the reimbursement from another department, that they go to, you're seeking it from him. You get an agreement with him.
Right, we'd set, we'd, we'd set the amount term.
Yes, kind of employment contract.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm wanting the council to consider, that we do a hire, because at some point, this is gonna have to stop going back and forth. I suppose the other local mayors, I mean, uh, you know, Brett and, Brett and all the chiefs, chiefs kind of, you know, work together for us, not stepping inside and trying to do this or that or whatever, but I think, I think we need to try to look at maybe a five-year type deal, uh, if we're gonna cut the, the expense, the expense that it's costing us, not only to send them to the academy, to uniform, the equipment that they have to have, I mean, it's, um, you know, that's, that's like a parent sending somebody to a four-year college, you get a degree, and they come back and they don't, not do it, they don't do what to do, what they paid for the degree with, you know, try to find a local job, just doing anything. I think if we're gonna send them, we're gonna, if we're gonna put our daughter in, I think they need to be committed to a five-year, I, I personally think it needs to be around a five-year contract with the city. You know, if, if you're gonna work with them. I just feel like I need to, uh, stay, how we need to handle that, and that's just what I'm gonna throw in after the five-year type contract. And Mike's working, is Mike, Mike's behind the podium tonight, trying out a big throw and stuff, I guess, but that, uh, he's working on the budget. There's several different places that I have seen, that Blue Cross Blue Shield is not doing a normal three percent or five percent increase, it's like nearly ten percent on the health insurance. So Mike, working with the budget, we're gonna, this council needs to consider, uh, what we're gonna do, if we're gonna do anything for is the cost of insurance going forward with this new budget, because it's gonna need a budget, it's gonna need a budget, what that increase is gonna be, if we're gonna try to pass that, which I know is election year, but it's still gonna happen. So we need to consider, think about what you're gonna do for is, uh, the cost of what the insurance increase is gonna be, and then possibly the cost of living, days across the border, whatever, but he's trying to, uh, get the budget in, worked out and ironed out to get it submitted by September, just next month.
I'm gonna try to have a rough draft at the next meeting.
We... So you might put it two or three ways, you might play with it two or three ways, but I got the council. I need, I need to know if like the insurance program could get this nine percent increase.
Well, I, I definitely think something else too, that we need to think about too, is when we hire someone for the police department, our department, if we can get someone that's already been in school, maybe offer some type of sign on with us.
I think, well, I must say to know about, we do have, we, we have a place set there for, I know for...
Yeah, but they, I know, but they get that when they finish the school anyway. I'm saying so that we can try to possibly get someone that we don't have to send to school. I mean, just something, that's all I can say.
What does that cost?
A lot, like, I wanna say...
Just twenty-five hundred, excuse me?
No, they're total. Well, and then if you say, you know, five years, that's fine, but like, you know, I understand, like, if a spouse is, if somebody's moving, like, out of state or whatever, that's understandable, but when you move into a neighboring town, you know, you gotta have some, something.
Well, I, I think, I think if we're considering that, I think it ought be broader than the, than the state statute, because the state statute, basically, if you leave, if, if a police officer lives Winfield, and goes to Jasper, department to department, then for a certain period of time, you can claw back that from them if they're gonna hire you. But what if you send someone to, they post certification, spend all this money on them, and they work as a police officer for two years, and then go to work somewhere else, not a police department? Then you don't have that, you don't have that clawback option. So ours needs to be a contract with that person, because there's more, and, and the statute's just limited to your training, cost and things like that, but like the mayor said, when you have someone, you've, that, you've bought uniforms, you've bought all kind of equipment for that person, specifically for them, that, you know, you need to be able to get back, get that money back, so. I mean, if, if you're, if you're making the commitment to them, I mean, it's not, you're making the commitment to them to send them to school and train them, then they need to make a commitment back. I'll, I'll pay you back for the commitment you made to me, and then once you get past that time period, then they're free to go, but, you know, they need, it needs to be a reciprocal commitment.
We all studied on that, uh, we'll see, you know, we're gonna be getting applicants, you know, uh, that one or two, I think, look, come in for an application, sends, he's been sent easy away, and that conversation, we'll keep it when he gets back. I don't guess I, um, I don't have any other business. I guess I'm moving on to the next item, I need to ask for approval, to council paper, approve of council paper, I've got a question. Larry made motion, ten second, all in favor. I'd like to, uh, ask the council, let me to go into the day of session, discuss a good amount of character, somebody, be real quick, we're gonna take no action when we come back out, so that'd be the end. Tim made motion.
Hi, my name is Dana, here at State Bank and Trust. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you since nineteen oh seven.
Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
Hi, this is Lee in Emily Hines, and here at Alexander's Heat and Air, we'd like to thank you for your business, and if there's anything you need, just give us a call. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Crystal, and I'm the general manager of Holiday Inn Grill Twenty-Two, just off of Exit Twenty-Six in Guen, Alabama. We want to invite you out to our wonderful Sunday lunch buffet from eleven to two, as well as our karaoke every third Saturday of the month. Our hotel offers multiple banquet rooms for all your meeting and event needs. Take a swim in our family-sized pool, and our staff invites you to stay in one of our guest-friendly rooms. Call us here at Holiday Inn in Guen at two zero five four six eight four six two five. You'll be glad you did, and remember, we cater.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guen, with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guen and Fayette.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
At home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.